The next case is case 11-24V. Jerry Jaggers. Mr. Jaggers, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Jerry Jaggers, 34 Morris Avenue. I represent myself and my brother Joe, who operate a funeral home at 24 Morris. Across the street for thirty years, we've had a partial parking lot for overflow crowds at the funeral home. And we occasionally still have an overflow crowd so folks don't have to park on the street. And we'd like to remove that house and make that area larger for parking.
Any questions for Mr. Jaggers at this time?
I have some pictures of that lot and also a couple of drawings.
As to what might be built or...
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, we'd like to see those, sure.
Here's what it looks like presently.
When you talk about the accessory structure, is that the big white thing back in the back of the lot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you plan to leave that?
There is a garage back there that we would like to leave, just to keep our snowplow in, that kind of thing.
Okay, and that's what that sort of big thing is?
Yeah, that's in the picture, that's kind of that barn.
It does look like a barn, it is a barn.
It was a barn.
Yeah.
There's a little white thing next to that. Here's a good sketch of how we're doing it. Sorry. The person too big, I guess. And there is a little piece of property back of that lot. It's that little garage, there's a garage sits right there.
It's the big garage.
Yeah, that's the little time room here.
And you, oh, that's it. So would you leave that?
I would no one to remove that one.
And then leave this one?
Yes, yes.
Can you show us in this picture which one you're removing?
I think it shows in there, it's another picture, maybe.
It's that one to the far left. This one?
Yeah, it is excellent.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it says excellent.
And this would be a median strip of some kind with landscaping?
Yes, right.
And a green space?
Right.
Okay.
I can see why you need this, why you want this.
Occasionally it's...
But you may not remember when Sarah Hendrick was the mayor, and suggested putting those parking lots, allowing this in R1 zones. And about forty people showed up at three o'clock on an afternoon and said, "We don't like that idea." Now, they're not here tonight, but that was the consensus in the neighborhood at the time. But I understand your need.
I do have a letter from the, both prop, two of the property owners, the other one, Herbert, says he doesn't object, but he didn't want them...
Yeah, I think it was the general idea, if you allow one, then everybody else wants one, and an R1, and, well, I don't know, we'll see how it goes tonight.
Okay. Anything else I can, would you like to see the letters that I have, or...
Do we have them in this?
I have a couple from the I've taken.
That you just brought, do you want to show them to us?
Sure.
Could you please, if you wanted to just say that?
I said when Sarah Hendrick was the mayor, there was a push either from her or from
people in town, who said, "Wouldn't it be nice if we could have some commercial parking in R1 zones? Because there are too many cars on the street, and we could have these parking lots, and then everybody could pay, and then that would be fine." Of course, this is not going to be a paid one.
Most of the area where the house is sitting would be a grass, shrubbery kind of area.
Right. Well, at any rate, this meeting was maybe the planning commission or the city council, I don't remember which, it was not a night meeting. And it seemed to have been added to the agenda to make it as inconvenient as possible for objectors to appear, which they did anyway, in a great number. And said, you know, "We would prefer not to have commercial parking lots in our neighborhood." Now, this may be a somewhat different thing, I don't know how you view this, it's not a paid lot, but it goes with a business that's allowed in the district, I think, so...
Thanks. That was a long time ago.
It is.
I was a kid.
Before we had parking lot restrictions too, maybe?
What?
Before we had parking, you know, how everything has to be landscaped now, if it's a...
Well, I don't think that was the issue, it was just the issue, suddenly the neighborhoods would be full of, possibly full of parking lots.
Well, that they were...
It can be too full, but there are not necessarily that many places you can put them, but it didn't seem desirable to the people on my side of town at the time. This, again, may be a different case.
Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this request?
Do we have his letters?
Yeah, I'll read them. Is there anyone wishing to speak in general comment?
Yes.
Please state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Ron Luce, I'm the executive director for the Athens County Historical Society at 65 North Court Street. I have, I want to be clear that this is not anything negative toward Mr. Jaggers at all. This home that is being discussed was built in the late 1800s, I believe. It was sold to a Mr. Johnson in 1902, and he lived on that property for, until 1941. He was accounting commissioner, city councilman. My issue is not necessarily to say that I'm against Mr. Jaggers doing what he needs to do. My issue is, I believe that part of Athens' great beauty and its potential for drawing tourism and for creating a better future is mixing and keeping what we currently have of the old world that was once here, and not being afraid to move forward at the same time. This is a wonderful old house that was displayed in the 1905 Atlas, and I'd like to show the picture to the group, if I may? This is the house here, as it originally was.
There's that barn.
It was a beautiful, two-story brick building that somebody has stuckled over. I don't know anything about the condition of the house, I don't know whether it is still sound, and perhaps it needs to be torn down, I don't know. But what I am asking is that before any decisions be made to tear down some of our oldest buildings, that we think long and hard. I, we can't replace these. You couldn't build that same house today, at what it would cost, it would be phenomenal. So, if I could wish for Mr. Jaggers anything, I would wish that the house would be restored to its original condition and be maintained as a residential property. I think it is just too great to lose. Beyond that, whatever decision you make is, I will accept that, but I'm very concerned that we, as part of the city, not get into tearing down a lot of our old structures.
I have a general question, does the historical society have the power to stop maybe the demolition of a building which might be historical?
If, if I had, if there was anything of great historical significance, I would certainly be here in the next category, moving absolutely against this. I don't, other than the fact that this was owned by Mr. Johnson, who was a commissioner and a city council member, it was just a residence. But a wonderful residence. If you look in that picture, it had stone lentils, it was a very nice elegant brick house that now has been lost, it's hidden behind a layer of what I consider to be ugly stucco.
Well, let me just add to what you're saying, since we're talking history. When we submitted the nomination of part of East State Street and part of Elmwood to the Ohio Historical Society for presentation to the National Register of Historic Places, we submitted an application for sixty-seven houses on East State, part of Elmwood. And at the end of it, when they accepted our application, they said, "Why don't you just do the whole neighborhood, from Morris on down?" And we said, well, we never thought of that, except...
That's a great question.
That it would be too much work.
Yeah, it would be a lot of work, and, but there are wonderful, wonderful old homes over that area, and once we knock them down and make them into parking lots, there's no replacing them. So, again, I want to be very clear, Mr. Jaggers, this is not personal toward you, and I understand that you need to do whatever is appropriate for your business. I would just ask the zoning board to be very mindful, anytime you allow an old building to be torn down, we can't put it back.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Yes, sir. It's nice.
Going back to anyone wishing to speak in favor of, I have two letters here addressed to the Athens zoning board. Letter number one states, "I, the undersigned, do not object to the removal of the house at 21 Morris Avenue owned by Joe and Jerry Jaggers, which is a partial parking lot used by the funeral home. Jaggers desire to remove the house and to make the parking lot larger. Sign, Tina Jeffers." And the second letter to the Athens zoning board, "I, the undersigned, do not object to the removal of the house at 21 Morris Avenue owned by Joe and Jerry Jaggers, which is already a partial parking lot used by the funeral home. Jaggers desire to remove the house and to make a large parking lot," and this is signed by Chris Cooper. Mr. Jaggers, do you have any further comments you'd like to make before we close the floor?
The, I realize a lot of the old houses are historical, but about every, almost everything on Morris Avenue now are student rentals, there's only about six permanent residents on the street now. And my feeling is, sometimes the student rentals end up kind of getting torn down by themselves.
Sir, I have one question.
Yes, sure.
How frequently do you need that overflow parking?
Oh, probably twenty-five, thirty times a year. Something like that, I guess. Now, maybe a hundred services of visitation we might have, mostly during visitation, more so than actual funerals.
And so you find that people then park along the street if they can find a place, or...
Well, they park illegally along the street if, on the side where there's not parking allowed, if everything is full.
Right.
Can you speak to the condition of the house?
Not very good.
You own the property, obviously.
I mean...
You own the property.
Yes, we've had it for probably, I'm not sure exact date, at least forty years, and the parking area's been there for thirty-some years. Because it was R3 when we bought the property and made the parking area there. And then it was reverted later to R1.
Okay.
But the very top of the street is still R3, isn't it?
Well, ours, the funeral home site's R3 down the house I live in, next door to the funeral home.
Okay, so this house somehow is in R1, the house we're talking about?
I think it is now, but originally that side of the street also was R3.
So when you bought the property, it was R3?
Yes, yes.
Right. How far does it go down?
To Montrose, maybe? Not much beyond that, does it?
On the funeral home side of the street, I'm almost positive his is the last lot on that side, on R3.
Okay, so the funeral home is in R3.
On the side of the house in question here, it only, Mr. Jaggers can work, I think on that side, it's only that apartment building...
On the corner?
On the corner, and perhaps the next lot.
Why would that be? Why would that be?
I have no idea.
Well, I think originally that area down through, I don't know how far down, was R3, just like the other side.
That's what I thought.
And it got changed to R1, like...
Well, are you sure it's R1? Positive.
Well, Ms. Hendrick.
I think I'm correct, I'm saying it's R1.
Well, we have to do it, we, we thought you'd get the neighborhood changed to R1, but I didn't think it went up that far.
Let me look at the map for a second.
While they're doing that, if I may make a suggestion, my...
It's very strange here, it's cut out.
History of doing projects up in historic villages in Columbus, and German, Italian, Victorian villages, if a situation like this came about, and it was the property owner's request to have something like this done, one of the conditions could be that, for a period of time, I don't know what this period of time is, he put it out there, if somebody wants to take it and relocate it, it's theirs. And then away, the cost gets incurred by somebody else, but the house is still safe, and relocated to another site. Obviously, there's a timeframe there that, you know, we'd have to, at that point, no longer allow, you know, but, it'd be up to the person to determine if they feel there's enough value, or if it's structurally sound enough to do such a thing, so...
Right, so that's speaking to the historical nature of it, but not to the issue of whether the, whether we would like to have a parking lot?
Right, right, no, that's just strictly to the historical nature of the house.
But it would save the house if somebody were willing.
Right.
I would encourage people to look at the map, it's very odd the way this is cut out.
That's what I thought, because it's very odd.
Then when we, when we bought that house, it was a single residence, then we made two apartments out of it. It still is two apartments.
Right, because the whole, well, there was the R3 at the top, and then the whole neighborhood was R2, and then it was rezoned to R1, but I thought that top part still stayed R3, I'm very surprised that this is...
Well, you have to see how this is cut out, it's like a cookie cutter, it's very strange. It's, I mean, if he had it, it was R3, it's very interesting why that little cutout became R1.
Exeter's very circumstances, here we go.
Geez, this is a... We should read something. Well, would they have just done that because it was at the time a single family? But it wasn't, as I was saying. Your house we're talking about, it's a single family, it's a... Yeah, well, R3. Yeah, there's nothing wrong with it, yeah, nothing wrong with it, but, so why would they just put it? So isn't that odd?
Yes, it is.
I don't really understand that at all.
Due to our lack of understanding of the zones now?
Well, just to say officially for the cameras, because we're mumbling over there, it looks like this lot in question, the house is on, is the very first lot that becomes R1. Right next to it, it looks like it goes R3 all the way up to Morris on that side, or, excuse me, East State Street on that side. For some reason, it looks like when they redid it, they, to R1, they started with Mr. Jaggers' house at 21 Morris, and then included the next house down to Montrose. But those are the only two lots on Morris that were changed over to R1, right there.
And behind is R3.
Everything behind it is R3, everything to the west.
But this little lot with Mr. Jaggers' house on it appears not just to be the only one that's R1, it's, it's literally surrounded by R3.
R3s.
On, on two, three sides.
I don't know, like I said, my only feeling, and I have nothing to back it up with, is because it is a big house, they didn't want to have it turned into anything more than what it was at that time, which is either a single-family home or duplex.
Probably was.
It's big enough to be, somebody could chop that house up into probably four apartments if they wanted to. So it might have been done to prevent that, I don't know.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion, please?
I move that we grant a variance to the property at 21 Morris Avenue from ACC 230311C to allow an accessory structure, that would be the bond-type garage, on a lot without a principal structure in an R1 zone where such a use is not allowed, and from ACC 230403A4 to allow a commercial parking lot in an R1 zone where such use is not allowed.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, let's proceed with the findings. Practical difficulty or undue hardship based on exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions pertaining to this piece of property? The level of enforcement of these regulations result in practical difficulty or undue hardship that is unnecessary to achieve the public purpose. Well, we've already have seen how it's so chopped up, and has changed in zones over the course of the years.
I guess this is a place to discuss the issues with the, the need for parking, it sounds like it's difficult, and maybe even a safety issue, when there is the need for overflow parking on that street. I mean, I don't know.
Exceptional circumstances?
I'd like to throw one thing out while you're speaking, too, just so you know, funeral homes are permissible in R1 zones, so...
Yes, we do understand that.
Are there exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to this property in question? Are the intended use of this property that do not generally apply to other properties in the same zone?
That's just what you said.
We just saw that.
Yeah.
Which was very confusing on the map, due to the small and varied zoning changes that's happened.
Well, that's true, except as Mr. Pesky says, there, there might have been a serious reason for making that R1 rather than including it in the R3.
And the reasons that we came up with, I don't think pertain to the house if it was torn down, whether it was a duplex.
No, no, I'm just saying that it has, saying that those are the exceptional circumstances is a little bit questionable, because there might have been good reasons for making it R1.
R1. Preservation of equal property rights, would little interpretation of these regulations deprive the appellate of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same zone, in the same vicinity?
Well, there is a funeral home farther down the street, but...
They don't have a big parking lot.
They don't have a parking lot.
They don't have a parking lot at all to speak of.
And there are no other businesses in that area, along that street?
Because it's an R1 zone, they're at the East State.
Because it's an R1, so it's, it's kind of giving a privilege, but not a special privilege.
Well, it would be a special privilege if it's not allowed in the zone, and if, if you say that they are not now allowed, and then this one is allowed, then you may have opened the door to have others in the R1s.
Well, the parking already exists.
Parking already exists, but it is not, it still has a house on it.
It does, which would be turned into green space, I assume, from the, from the picture.
I guess I'm just worried about the precedent, so...
Minimum variance, this variance granted is a minimum variance.
I'm sorry, can we go back to special privilege? If, if it's only being used for business, how would that be creating a privilege that other people would then want to?
Because it's listed as a commercial parking lot, it is a parking lot to service a business in an R1 zone. This business is allowed in an R1, other businesses are not, but it would set, in my mind, possibly a precedent, precedent that other businesses might want to simply find an empty lot or two in an R1 zone and make a parking lot in the middle of it.
But that wouldn't be, they'd have to come before the Board of Zoning Appeals to do that.
Yes, they would, they would. But maybe they have a business just right next door on East State Street, and there are two lots right behind them, and they'd like to have a big parking lot. I think the objection when, when it came up before was that people didn't want the added, they didn't want the business aspect of it in the neighborhoods, and they didn't want more traffic, so...
Not of a general nature. The condition or situation of this piece of property, or intended use of the property for its variances sought, is not of a general or a current nature.
Probably not.
Probably not.
Yes, probably not.
I'm, I'm sorry, what did you say about absence of detriment?
I haven't gotten, oh, yeah, you're right, let's go ahead.
Yes, absence of detriment, the authorizing of this variance would not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property, and will not materially impair the purpose of the code or the public interest. We had two letters in favor of approving the house to be torn down, and we did have the historical society representative state a neutral position of really not wishing to see the house torn down, and it'd be nice to preserve it, but whatever decision was rendered would be acceptable, or accepted. Any other comment?
About absence of detriment?
Yes.
Do we want to get into this question of making the, a condition of making the property available to someone who wants to, that seems complicated. Restoring, you're talking about restoration?
Yes, no.
No?
No, it's not ours to deal with, really.
And we, we didn't do minimum variance, did we?
Yes. Is this the minimum variance required to make possible reasonable use of the property?
No.
No?
No, it's already been made for use of, he needs more, but it's...
He needs a rental.
Well, it's vacant.
Or it's vacant.
All right, Michelle, we'll start with you.
Oh, thanks. I'm going to say yes.
Betty?
I'm going to say no.
Lisa?
I vote yes.
John?
I would no.
And I vote yes. You have your variance, Mr. Jaggers? It's bad proof. The next case is case 11.
You two need to speak and maybe work something out, if that's an option, if he's willing to do so, relocation, I mean, maybe you have some ideas, suggestions you can give Mr. Jaggers on that, if it's something that he's willing to do, I think it's worth an option to look into it, if the two of you would like to discuss it.
Case 11-25V, Richard P. Buckley and Virgie Mae Buckley Appellants. If you would please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Call their representative.
Jim Silvery, 35 North College Street in Athens. I represent the Appellants who own and operate Kimes Convalescence Center, and if I might approach, I've got some visual aids.
We like those.
Yes, we do. We love visual aids.
I have a fake Kimes, and her husband, at one time, operated a Hillcrest nursing home. It was located originally outside of the city of Athens, on this, this little strip of land right here, I think it's about half an acre of ground. And in 1952, they purchased this entire rest of this land from the owner of, at Athens Lumber Company, Mr. Lou Roberts, and continued to operate the, the nursing home. As progress developed and was decided that the state would take a large portion of their property for the improvement of Route 50 and 32, and you can see, here in yellow, is what was left of the property that was originally that large piece of property. Also of note, all of this land here, they had frontage on state Route 50. Once the state took their, took their property, and they were left with, with this, they had only access to their property was Kimes Lane off of Blackburn Road, which obviously cut down all of the road frontage, and, you know, fairly much isolated this, this entire property. Now, the property that is the subject of, of the request tonight is outlined here in In the mid-sixties, of course, the zoning first came to Athens, and interestingly enough, and we're looking at another interesting piece of zoning, is that their property was zoned partially B2 for the Kimes nursing home... zoned partially B2 for the Kimes Nursing Home and the rest of it was R1. And so split their property into two different zones. I have an aerial photograph showing before the, after the construction of the nursing home, but prior to the construction of 50, which kind of follows the contour of the land. This is the original Hillcrest Nursing Home, and Mrs. Kimes lived in this other home here. The house in question is this home that now we have Kimes Lane that comes through here and the only access to this home, and this is the Robertson's home here, and attached to our application is the consent or the approval of the Robertson's to permit the applicants to use this home, the first floor of that home for offices for up to six people. So that's, that's the request. It's obviously a very unique piece of property, being now within the city of Athens, sitting on a five-acre tract pretty much by itself. There's still these woods behind the Robertson's and up in this area that separate their property from other R1 properties up here. Obviously, no detriment to anyone else, certainly no hindrance with traffic or anything like that, because the only people that use this would be the Robertson and the employees of Kimes for their hospice employees. And I think I also attached a prior zoning board decision from April of 1980, a very learned decision. You can see that, a very similar kind of case, right in the very same area on Albany Road, with very similar purpose. And it also shows how long some of us have been around.
Old zoning board members.
So I think that you can see that it's really kind of a very unique set of circumstances with the reconfiguration of the property, the zoning, the use of that particular property really is far better used as an adjunct to the nursing home, which is really quite important for the city, the service it provides for the residents, not only those who are patients there, but the employees who work there.
Any questions for Mr. Silvery? Is the house currently being used as an office space?
I don't think so. Mrs. Kimes lived there for years and she kept an office in the parlor there, but it hasn't been, I don't think it's been used for a long time. I know this recently, they had an auction of all of her, a lot of the personal property from the house. So it's not been reconfigured for offices at this point.
Is the second story currently?
No, it's not, it's not being used. It hasn't been used. How long, Rick, since it's been used?
Mrs. Kimes passed away in 1999, and the house has just been used intermittently as a residence for my family as they went to college, and now it's empty. You've not rented a property here or so. But the floors are distinct and there's no one living in those floors right now.
And for the record, that's Mr. Rick Buckley, who owns the property and the nursing.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Did Mrs. Kimes move to that house because her residence was torn down?
Yes, I'm sure that's right.
And so there'd be commercial use in offices on the lower floor, and is there intended use for the upper floor?
It could be rented, but I don't know that that's...
Perhaps, would you mind coming to the podium and stating your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you. My name is Richard Buckley. I represent Kimes Convalescent Center and Kimes Hospice. The question was...
What's the intention for the upstairs?
The upstairs will, if we are able to get the zoning request, we may use it for housing and rent an apartment up there because it's upstairs and there is a distinct boundary between the two levels.
I know that you sound tentative about that, but the request does include this mixed residential-commercial use.
Yes.
And I guess I would feel happier if I sort of knew exactly how big the apartment would be, or how many people would be in it, or whether it'd be an apartment for one or two people.
Well, it's an apartment floor. It has two bedrooms.
Okay.
A living room and would have a kitchen, as well as a bathroom. It's a building that's 26 by 38 in square feet. So all of that was within one level, which is 26 by 38 square feet. I would emphasize, though, that's on a five-acre parcel. And the employees are there just during the day. Correct. The regular business hours.
Well, certainly, I'd assume there's no parking problem, so...
Yeah, nope.
Any other questions for me?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I ask if there's anyone wishing to speak in favor of the variance. I have before me here a letter addressed to the zoning board stating, "We are the property owners at 60 Kimes Lane, Athens, Ohio, where we maintain our home, which is located on approximately five acres of land. We are aware that Richard P. Buckley and Virgie Mae Buckley, the owners of the acreage adjacent to our property, have requested a variance to be permitted to use part of the building at 64 Kimes Lane to include offices for up to six people working for Kimes Hospice, and a separate part of the building for residential purposes. This is to advise you that we do not object to this and that we support this request by the Buckleys. Yours, Jerry and Rebecca Robertson." Is there anyone wishing to speak in general comment at this time? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition at this time? Please state your name and address at the podium.
My name is Maury Middleman and I live at 7066 North Blackburn Road. I've lived there since 1984. During that tenure of time, there have been approximately four applications for rezoning. And each time it's, for whatever reasons, or it's been rejected. My reasons against the change are several. First of all, that whole hillside is clay. If there was any excavating done, it puts all of the houses on the other side, on the Blackburn side, in jeopardy. The traffic pattern is maximum. There are times of the day that it's literally impossible to make a left-hand turn out of North Blackburn Road. I also feel that there's another gentleman, Thomas Lovedoll, that owns a majority of that hillside. He has made applications in the past for R2, for apartments. So if we get an apartment in there, then I think it opens the door for more apartments and that just creates a bigger, a bigger traffic problem than what we already have. It's, I can't express to you enough the safety issue because there's a little bit of a curve in North Blackburn Road coming down the hill. And if traffic backs up, and the way cars come down that hill, they don't see the cars backed up. I've seen more accidents over the years than I can count. So to increase the use from Kimes is just going to exacerbate the problem.
Any questions?
Well, how do you view the increase of the use? It sounds to me like the offices are already...
I don't have a problem with the office. What I have a problem with is the apartment.
Okay.
That can be done, as it is. You can turn a residence or a house into an apartment unit. That part is perfectly acceptable.
In an R1?
Yes.
Three unrelateds.
Well, I'm telling you that the intersection is tenuous at best.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Mr. Silvery, would you like to make any closing comments?
I would. Just in response, there was a comment made about a number of requests for zoning, and that's certainly not been from the Buckleys. I'm not sure what he was referring. Excavating, they don't intend to do any excavating. Even still, there's excavating all over town with new houses and that kind of thing. Being on a five-acre tract, even if there were any, it certainly can be done safely, although that's not anticipated. Traffic, I think having six employees at that, at that house is not going to significantly increase the amount of traffic on Blackburn Road. So that's, that's the only response that I would make to all of that. And certainly, there's no, no traffic that's going to be affected once you get onto Kimes Lane at all.
Thank you. Someone please make a motion?
All right, I'll just, question?
No, I just thought that...
And we have one other?
Yes. Closing comments. Please state your name and address for the record at the podium, please.
My name's Jean Reed and I'm the executive director for Kimes Hospice. And I'd like to say that for our hospice, many of our clients will be in the homes in the community. So much of our traffic will not be up through the pattern, you know, the driveway. It'll actually be out in the community. So I just wanted to share that.
Do they have to come back to your office?
Many days they won't be. And oftentimes, the six employees won't even be in the office. So many of them be in aides and nurses.
Well, I'm assuming that these are not new employees.
They're not new employees.
So they've been coming and going?
They've been coming and going. They travel that road every day now, so... Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I move to grant a variance to the property at 64 Kimes Lane from ACC 230401B4 to allow a structure with mixed residential and commercial use, with more than one-half of the structure in commercial use in an R1 zone where no more than one-half of the structure in commercial use is the maximum allowed.
Second?
I'll second.
Let's proceed with the findings. Practical difficulty and undue hardship in this variance request because of exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions pertaining to this specific piece of property. The literal enforcement of these regulations would result in practical difficulty or undue hardship that is unnecessary to achieve the public purpose. And again, it's the zoning issue of the split up and most of it is in one zone and where the house sits is in another.
Well, you're saying that Kimes itself is in one zone and the house is in another?
Correct.
But that's actually appropriate because they're different kinds of things. One is a residence.
True, but all under the ownership of one person.
So originally, I guess they were even not zoned, or...
Right.
Okay, they weren't zoned. And then they divided them for single residents and actually a business.
Exceptional circumstances?
It's very strange.
Very similar to the practical difficulty?
Yes.
Preservation of equal property rights? Literal interpretation of these regulations would deprive the appellant of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same zone or vicinity?
Probably not anybody else in the same zone or vicinity.
It's all in the, the large scope of the acres of the property itself.
Other than the other zone, that was a situation that was approved a while back, a few years ago.
No, not so long ago.
Yeah, whenever that was, I'm looking, I forget.
56, was it? By Rock? Or the construction place, or we call it. Well, anyway, apartments.
Minimum variance? Do we feel that the variance granted is the minimum variance required to make possible and reasonable use of this property? I believe that it's fairly minimum. It's, no one's occupying the house as it is and may or may not occupy the second floor as an apartment, and only six people who are currently, at this time, employed by Kimes will be residing there as an office space. Absence of detriment, the authorizing of this variance would not cause substantial detriment to the adjacent property and not materially impair the purpose or public interest of the code. We do have a letter stating that the closest neighbor to that piece of property is in full support of the variance request.
And you have one strong objection.
And we have one strong objection to the request and not of a general nature.
No.
No, it is, yes, it is not.
Yes, it is not. Except we have had similar requests in the past year.
Yes, it's becoming more similar that at some point, we need to redirect one back to the planning commission. Stay tuned for 2012. All right, at this time, we'll take a vote. Lisa will start, but you're in the game, please.
I'll vote yes.
I would no.
I'm going to vote yes.
I'll vote yes.
And I vote yes. The variance is approved. Down we go into executive session this evening.
Correct.
So we'll take a short break at this moment.
Could you vote on the minutes?
We want to do the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
All in favor of the minutes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved. We'll take a short...
If I might, Mr. Cherry, is that the next thing on the agenda? Yes. Okay. In order to go into an executive session, we would require a motion to be made and second it, the motion would have to state a desire to go into the executive session for the reason of, to discuss pending litigation, and would also have to state that myself and Director Paskey would be invited into that executive session, and we would need a roll call vote on that.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss litigation matters, pending litigation matters.
Director Paskey might...
And invite Director Paskey to attend and Pat Lang. Is the mayor, no mayor? Okay.
All in favor?
I second.
John seconds.
Roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Are we now officially in an executive session? We'll take a little break. We'll take about a five-minute break.